All right, I'm gonna call the work session to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call Brennaman. Haley.
Here.
Island. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
And have a forum.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the work session?
This is Jeff O'Moore.
This is Mary Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
I'm.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, looks like we'll go to the GM update.
Uh, I have none as well. I do have one. Uh, so tomorrow, uh, the UG special session for pilot reduction is being moved up unless you're gonna talk about it or
You go right ahead.
Okay, so it's at five, 5:00 PM, uh, tomorrow on the field floor. Uh, I guess I should have checked.
You're fine. You're fine.
And it was supposed to have been next week, but, uh, the county administrator wanted to kind of move this up to kind of get a sense of what the mission may do because they're starting the budget process and, uh, and he's just trying to get a handle on revenue so that that can be part of the leading conversation going into the budget center other meetings they're getting ready to have or have already started. So I'll be over there. Request to come over. We've provided some some, uh, comments already this week. Uh, I haven't seen the final, final presentation. I did see part of one.
Either.
Okay, either. So I saw part of one. We looked at that and then Lori and I and Angie got together and talked about, uh, what we thought of it and provided those comments back. So so I have for GM update.
It would note that Mr. Um, Mylan was present at 5:02.
Thank you. Um, on that special session, is that the only agenda item?
No.
No, it's, it will be first, but the second one will be revenue neutral. And I think the time is theoretically to be spent evenly.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
And to that, to that note, uh, I've met with David Johnson a few times. You know, I was on the interview panel and, uh, probably more than any other candidate, he had did his homework on the BPU budget. So when he came to the interview, he was very much prepared to speak to that. And he talked about the amount of debt that the unified government currently has on his books and how much that was throwing and moving forward to future generation. And, uh, he just said, you know, there's gonna have to be some hard decisions made. And one approach to that was gonna be revenue neutral, tight budget, you know, as property taxes continue to go up. UG's gonna have to take a look at the mill levy and say, how do we offset that so that the revenue comes in, it's gonna be the same and, and the UG's not getting all the wind field windfall effect from, you know, the increasing property values. Now, if you're at the commissioners talk, their sense and their comments has always been, well, we're not in charge of assessing properties. They are in charge of setting the, setting the budget, approving the budget and approving what that mill levy radials. So so and I know that the interim county administrator had already approached him about that. It didn't go that well. So now here's the new permanent county administrator that wants to try to have the same conversation. And he said it's gonna probably take some time before it really sinks in and, and, uh, he can get his message across. I told him to look. I think our residents need some property tax relief.
Well, we're not going to improve our city to the level that everybody hoped to on the backs of the, of the taxpayers. There's, there's not enough. There's not enough volume of dollars to do that.
Right.
So we need to what is worth getting us here has got us here with a lot of debt. So clearly it's not working.
Yeah, right. Right.
A little reminiscent of the ground thing. On a different scale. Anyway.
Are there any other, uh, board updates?
Can I just ask a few questions about that? Is it, they're just gonna present the plan that you have been working on? Is that correct?
In my part of the session, yes.
You're, you're gonna just present that to be voted on or just for information? Do you know?
There's no, there will be no vote. There's not even a resolution to vote on yet. It's sort of to, I think, to get feedback from the full commission.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think it is open to the public.
It is.
Yes.
If anybody wanna go, definitely go. So pilot reduction, looking at reducing the pilot.
Yeah, exactly.
Welcome, Mr. Brennaman.
Thank you, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I'm like
You're okay. I'm glad you're one piece.
Me too.
Um, do you have any, um, any updates?
Uh, I've got a meeting on Monday. It's coming Monday, so I'll have something at the next.
Sounds good. All right, we're moving on, uh, to the big event of the night, the Community Engagement Committee Framework.
Um, Adam here, Adam here, Adam here.
Mr. Haley. Mr. Haley.
Yes, um, thank you. Of Economic Development and Finance. I know we're anxious to move on to the big work session, but just, uh, we have a cool meeting, um, of Economic Development and Finance last Monday. Still measures included the expansion of the home development. And what that's gonna mean to the utility and where they'll come online with that. That's out by the Margaritaville and the further development, ongoing development. Also a discussion of the Lanier project, closing of the RE Center as we know, Invention Center, and how that'll be replaced with the plan that did pass the, the commission. And there were several other considerations or items I hold that for, I did until next time, so we can move on. But I did wanna share that we have met ED and that Economic Development Finance. UG Committee did meet. I was in attendance. And there are quite a few, uh, a few projects, uh, going on for development in our county.
Thank you, David. Okay, so now we are to the Community Engagement Committee Framework, um, that has been sent to the board for its review, uh, comment, input, et cetera. Um, this is a framework that um, uh, committee members, Mary, Jeff and I, uh, developed. And I give Jeff a ton of credit for, um, I, I know it looks really familiar to you. It may just look in different places, um, for, for actually putting, you know, that to paper um, at, at one point and giving us, uh, just such a, um, such a solid base to work with. So thank you for that. But, um, you know, this is, I, I know that this, uh, type of, of arrangement has been, um, tried before. I think Bob has educated us maybe in the early eighties. It was, um, it was, uh, you know, it, it was alive and well, uh, with the board and the community. Um, I don't know where it went. I don't know why it went away. Um, so we're gonna try it again and we're gonna try it, um, potentially under a framework that looks like what we've got on this resolution tonight. And so I, I welcome, uh, comments, input, suggestions, um, from the board based on their review of it.
Well, this is where it looks to be submitted.
Yeah, it's, it's at the end of your packet.
Well, I've got problems with the whole concept we're trying to do here. So I haven't read this resolution at this point. But based on the input received from the public, I'm pretty unhappy that it does not include all of as you can. None whatsoever. I live in the first district. You live in the third. The second. I spend hours bringing to the board two documents and nobody seems to care about but me at this point. I talk to this vigilante. That's my words. You don't have a lackey. Got a name, go on.
Let, let's keep it respectful, Bob, please.
Yeah, boy.
Let's keep it respectful, please.
I didn't hear you.
Could we keep it respectful, please? And, and, yes, sir.
Respectful. I could be embarrassed. I didn't hear you. He gave me a list, a whole bunch of names here. My question was, who are these people and what do they want? He said, well, I'm gonna tell you what I talked to him. He told me to talk to some of y'all before that meeting. And he said, all these people assigned a whole bunch of documents they don't like about what you were doing. I said, well, I says, I've got people that I know about. A few relatives here. And friends. And I asked them, have they signed a document? If there was, I haven't signed anything. So I said, well, I'll find, I'll bring you something that showed this sign up is the best place. So another week later, he came into the office and he gave Bill Johnson 25 pages. He was sad. One explanation here. And it talked about something about BPU. It talks about, I guess you all agree on this, so something about the state, about the UG that you'd be doing, about don't cut off, et cetera. And health organization, whole bunch of things. So my question was, what do these people are signing for? What do they want? Did everybody agree with the document? So I made 25 copies. Hey, I'm all here. Get down to my point. I live in District 66104. Rosedale, I think it's 66105.
Three.
I think 166104.
Three.
Four, three. So 103, 105, 106. Go a little bit. Nobody on this list is from those, except 66104. This does not represent 03, 04, 05, 06. I disagree because I can't sit here and there only one district that had 25 pages. Listen, Chairman, BPU and you and you and you don't have nobody on this list that you know of. Not one. He told nobody here is outsider. No bonus list is from no place but 6614. Now, how do I tell my friend? My daughter lives in Rosedale. And she's poor of this. She's not in this district. My fault. My point is I can be approved of something like this when it's back in third district. And it was not including.
And so Bob, let me clarify for a little bit. Um, so, you know, the, the process, and, and I know you said you haven't had an opportunity to read it yet, but the process is going to be an application process
So like
where people submit applications. We're going to pick, appoint three people to be on a steering committee that is not the BPU board, that is not BPU staff, that are going to select those 10 applicants who want to participate as community ambassadors. They may be on that list. They may not be on that list. They may be from 66105. They may be from 66109. But their residency will have to be verified in either way.
That's fine. But my point is did they get a copy?
That, that is That has nothing to do with the, with the framework for this committee.
No, well, my, my point is
We're not basing it on that, I guess.
Well, 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 we're not addressing all these comments here. What does this really mean?
All those, that list of people? No.
Well, I'm looking at if these documents is what he's talking about, all the things that we are not doing correctly. And they feel everything about BPU is all bad. We socialize everything. There, here again, it's all 66104. For everything I'm getting from all this, I'll say confusion about what we're not doing, like the Board of Publicities for 20 years. I also relate to, yeah, 66104. That's not correct. It's the whole community that should be recognized that they have a problem. So am I ready to write the document we got it, 66104?
That is just, that is just the opinion and recommendations of one entity. There, that's why the application process will be available to all line, all KCK residents.
That's one of my concerns. That's consistent. And we can contact the other neighborhoods about what we got here, or is it just actually just 66104?
We're, we're just, we're not isolating this to any zip code. And what we're, what we're going to do potentially, if this is adopted by the full board, is to then put in, um, to motion BPU's Communications Department to reach out to every NBR, every avenue we have to communicate with and do outreach in the community to let them know, we now have this Community Engagement Committee formed. We would like you, if you would like to be a part of it, to apply to be a part of this and be an ambassador for two years. To bring community concerns to the committee, and then this committee would bring them to the full board.
Okay, now, that's a very good statement. How much new bit?
I'm sorry?
It's
How much new bit?
It's in the the packet that came. It describes their commitment that anybody who applies to it to be on the, on the committee has to commit to it. There are repercussions if you don't attend, if you miss the, a certain percentage of them, that you will give up your seat and it will be, be vacated and filled by another community member.
That document someplace.
Yeah, it's on the
It's in the back of your packet. It's a new packet of your board packet for tonight.
That this week. It's the last, like, three pages of it.
Well, good mistake right here.
Yeah, the very, very back. But I don't know about the book.
I, I think
Go ahead, Tom.
I think that, uh, in the last six months or so, we've seen definite uptick in engagement from the community and in community wanting to get involved. Uh, primarily, I think it's probably been in the 66101, 102, three areas. But I think that something like this, making it broader, reaching out to the other areas, having this, this group, this committee to bring these things before the board, it might cut down some on our, you know, uh, people, uh, that show up at the meetings because we'll be getting from a different, a different template. So I'm, I think it's a good plan and I'm in favor of it. I think it's not in the coverage. But these should be covered.
Thank you, Tom.
I, I think anytime that you can increase communication, you, you do a better job. So I, I feel like, you know, we've been listening for a, a year and a lot of it is negative. So what, let's try this. Let's sit down and try to have a good conversation and, um, bring some of these things that, um, are problems to many people to light. And let's see if together we can solve them.
And a lot of the problem exists, you know, miscommunication.
Many times. So communication is key. So, um, Bob, I like to think of this, you know, selection process similar to what we did with the, um, Ethics Committee some time back where people in the community came together and chose those people. And we didn't have really anything to do with it. So we're just the listeners after we get it organized.
Yeah, I, I mean, I look at this as another conduit for the ratepayers, our customers, our neighbors, to be able to communicate their concerns. Like I said, my hope is, many of the concerns and stuff are and, and I believe from listening to, uh, comments by, uh, people who've been either at the meeting or online over the last few months, there's a lot of misunderstandings and misconceptions. I think that teaches us and, and from this, we can learn better ways to communicate and, and try to get the message out. And, and these ambassadors, ambassadorships work both ways. Not only they are ambassadors of the community to us, but they can learn reality of the utility and what it means in the community and, and its limitations, because there are limitations to everything. And they can communicate that back to the community. So if, you know, right now, there's six board members trying to communicate to a city where now it can be six board members plus 10 more people and then anybody else that's in the audience that can hear it all as the message in one dime and say, okay, I understand why we can only do this. And then they can go back and, and I, I just think that if, like you said, anyway, anytime that you can open additional lines of communication, it's never a bad thing. You can't over communicate.
Well, and one thing, you know, I think we've seen is, um, you know, having additional perspectives on the way, you know, certain, A, I guess the, the composition of certain policies and B, the impact of certain policies. Having a different perspective might allow us to see it differently, um, you know, and potentially tweak it. Um, you know, to, to not have a negative impact or a perceived negative impact that it, that it may have. So I just, I think having different perspectives, and you, you guys have said this, having more voices, more brains, you know, more eyes, I, I don't know that it hurts, better answered. Maybe.
So a question I got is, I know it's limited to residents and small businesses. If this thing, uh, takes off and six spots a year down the road, you start hearing from larger businesses that want to have a role in dissipating, would the board be interested in opening it up to that?
I
You know, I, I would, I would say this is that we have, we have a department that deals with large customers. The reason that I am so on board with this right here is we don't have a department that only, that reaches out to our small customers, our ratepayers, our residents and very small commercial businesses. That's to me, you know, what this is. This is opening, this is opening up an avenue for them to be treated the same way that a General Motors is, where that they have the ear of the utility just as much.
I would not.
They have a customer service department that have about 35.
I understand that, but, but I also understand that we reach out. You know, we, we do more of a reach out and I, and I'll, you know, you don't wanna go to battle with me on that. I, I, I understand the reason we do it because it is revenue.
Simply a comment.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to that, but I don't think they would sit well together. I think that the bigger businesses would be separate, like.
Well, the only point I want to make is resident is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna walk away thinking residential customers are not being supported by this utility.
No.
They are. We have a whole customer service department that does that.
I agree, but, but I look at the residents, you know, we, we've all sat through every, every meeting that talked about the income levels in our community. And there are, there are issues and concerns that affect our residential customers that are not the same at all. So this, to me, this is more geared toward that. I mean, the small commercial businesses almost, I'm almost, you know, not in favor of that, except that a lot of times those small commercial businesses represent one or two people only. But to me, the, the, the core of this is the residential customers in our city, making sure that, you know, we don't have a newspaper, we don't have great avenues of communication. There's another way that we can increase that communication with our residents.
And if, if we all remember when we've strategic planning exercises, um, that, you know, over the course of many meetings, um, you know, effective communication was at the top of our list. And so if this can increase that, great. Right? I mean, this is, you know, th- this is something that a subset of the board is signing up for too. So, um, you know, and, and with respect to, you know, larger commercial customers and, and things like that down the line, um, you know, I think we'd have to evaluate it at the time. I mean, I don't, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to it on its face. I think it's probably a different forum though. I'm not sure that they have the same issues, but, you know, they have different policies that apply to it.
For the record, I support the board doing this.
Oh, sure.
Okay, I, I'm just asking the question.
Absolutely.
It's a long day for me, aren't we?
No, that's okay. If the question comes back, I'm, I'm just trying to help.
Absolutely.
Uh, it's a Nebraska front remark. Wants to have a voice in this.
Sure. Uh, David, do you have any comments or suggestions or thoughts?
I think the liberty process that we're going through, Rose, is, is good because there is a balance that has to be struck. And the ongoing dialogue that has not been had is being addressed partially now. But as we hone this process, we understand, as has been stated, that the UG is going through this perilous time. And I mean, in terms of, of our finances and, uh, the dilemma is gonna be, how do we, how do we, uh, take into account first and foremost, what we should is what's sustainable for our taxpayers slash ratepayers, uh, in, in our county. And, and it can't be means tested. It's already been said that. I know we're not gonna end up saying that your zip code, because of your zip code or your census tract, the economy is such that this is what you should afford. I don't see that being a part of the game or, or where it comes through revenue from our law.
David, you're breaking up really bad.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm in a, in a bad place, but listening with great intention and be continued. I'll move to a better place.
Thank you. I guess, so there's only one other element, um, to this that is not part of, um, well, I guess we can go to the application first, maybe. And I don't know if folks had questions about, I mean, the application obviously would not be part of resolution itself. Um, I think that is just a, a fluid document at this point. Um, we probably need to hone that further as well. Um, that was just something to get out there to sort of match what the framework is, if you will.
I think, depending on what the board added, I was gonna add, we were done, you know, acknowledgement language such as, I acknowledge and authorize that BPU staff will look at my account to make sure that I'm in a capable, that I've been, I was gonna put
Add that when the emails are new?
Yes, so I was, yes, so I was gonna put that, yeah, but I didn't know what else the board might wanna add, so I didn't put those acknowledgements in yet.
If anybody would
Yeah, one thing.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm still on screen. I can deal with it.
I like paper too.
I'm sorry, I have all over my phone trying to find it.
And then the other question that we did not discuss is sort of, who's going to collect the applications to then give to the, for the selection committee? He didn't. So we'll need to post that. We'll need to add that to that, you know, please return to so they have a very specific
The communication of the government, maybe.
I was actually thinking, um, that these could be online applications. I know that may not be conducive for everyone. So to your point, they have, if they're gonna be returned in paper, they need to return somewhere. Um,
That's what I was thinking. Uh, the communication That's what I was thinking, uh, the communication department is going to do it. They'll probably also be communicating to the uh. Steering committee members, which I've got a couple that agree to. We need. I mean, I don't, I don't know, is that a, would that be an issue? That'd be basically Dave Melhoff's department would be like.
We can help out.
The, yeah, just just store them until to hand off to the steering committee.
I think to be fair to the applicants, we just need to give them a very definite. At like a P O box or a.
Return it to the name.
Name and address. Get online.
One staff, one staff member be responsible for the collection and. And then transfer to the steering committee member. Because I'm assuming that staff will also have to vet. The applications prior to, they're not going to have a steering committee members come in and vet it.
No, it would be staff that would have to check to make sure that.
We just need to find that one staff member who's going to be ultimately responsible, the gatekeeper of this process.
We'll have somebody, somebody in customer service. Verify that they're a customer.
Can it be Patrice? I think Patrice is actually, her name's been mentioned before in relation to this. I think she, she may have half like raised a pinky, like, yeah, I'll help at some point.
Have him Patrice, okay.
I mean, if if she has the bandwidth to do it, if she doesn't, she doesn't, I get it.
She's got access to U M S. So, yes.
So Angie, do you have what you, I mean, are you gonna modify the?
Yes, so I would just put, you you know, probably at the top, how to submit and then um. Add in a place, you know, I acknowledge that, you know, by clicking or signing here, I acknowledge that. A B P staff member will check to make sure that I am a customer.
Right.
I think.
That's what we talked about.
Right, I mean, exactly. Look, I. I don't make forms for ending, I'm not a graphic designer. Did the best I could to get it back before it's. No problem.
Well, let's just hopefully get ten or.
That's right. So if we do.
So can we recap what we just started?
Yes.
David will make sure the application is available on the website, he'll work with the N B Rs. To make sure that they they know where to go.
And his other extended list of outreach.
They will either mail or they'll come back uh, online and and make their application. And then that'll get routed to Patrice. Patrice will then collect it and then sit down with the full board. And then you guys will make.
Okay, everything goes to the steering committee.
A certain number of.
Okay, that's why I wanted to go back to you. I left the steering committee out, so.
Yeah, and there is a possibility, I remember Dave, David uh, Melhoff saying that there's a possibility of where timely enough. That it could become uh, something at least a blur in the next.
And I'm assuming the board, if if someone does not, you know, puts that they are. Customer, but they are not found as a customer, that that will not be forward, that will not be forwarded on to the.
Right, that's correct, because.
Wouldn't be.
They wouldn't be vetted properly. I mean, they wouldn't meet the qualifications.
I think the last time I also remember. And Jill said you had two, you guys were going to talk about potential candidates for the steering committee and.
Well, we were going to get names and then we would.
Right, so.
At at some point, we turn our names into Angela and then she would. I guess just to find out how many of them she could actually get on the date. Yeah, to find out, you know, on the date that once, once the date is determined to go through it. Because the ones that I talked to, I told them that we would have a space available at the B P U office. Where they would come in and they would meet together, however many's in the group, and they would vet and rate rank, I mean, the uh. The applications because. You know, if we can spread it across the county as much as possible.
So are you giving me a list that I will then call and ask? You know, are you, can you do this? And then I'll, and then the board will then whittle that down? Or is it just anyone on this list that can appear will appear?
I I think out of that list, I guess what my hope is, is that we've spoken to them first.
Yeah.
And they have agreed to do it if they are called upon.
And if they're available on the date, because the two that I have are basically, they could both do it. But depending on the date, at least one of them will be available. So, you know, that's why they're going to need to know when it would be the specific.
Be people on the committee, right?
That's what.
That's correct.
Okay, so. If all you guys reach out and if there's ten people that are interested, and those ten people go back to Angie, who makes the determination?
I figured we don't.
Really, and I'm not.
I I think that it's, first of all, it's time for these people to offer their time to do this, and so I don't have any.
No, and I don't think that any of the two that I spoke to, you know, I mean, basically, it was like, hey, can I ask a favor? Because that's basically what you're doing. You're asking, you get nothing out of it, except if you're helping. Move this forward, and they both were like, yeah, it will help our community, and that's what they look at.
This is, do you want an alternate just to get to be on standby?
You know.
Okay, I have one question that I don't, all right, it, this goes out online. What if someone can't like get it offline or copy it? Where would they get a paper copy?
Um, so that, you know, the N B Rs would have them.
Come to my house.
Okay. They would have some at N B Rs, okay, okay. Just, I didn't.
We can, I can leave some at the guard stand as well.
Or they could go to the library and make it that one printed there.
Okay, I just, I know that that sometimes people don't have the ability to.
Yeah, they don't have a printer in their house.
Okay, and so sort of along those lines of, hey, the N B Rs can like maybe have them, right? You know, I I think we all agree that um, to the extent that, you know, this. This process and and folks do want to participate in this, this this becomes a thing. Um, the N B Rs are are likely going to be pretty involved in it somehow, some way. And um, we know we have heard um, at least one community member um, talk about. Uh, you know, funding associated with this. Uh, I have had one discussion with Bill about this because I'm still a little bit unclear on how that funding looks. Um, and and what it's supposed to do, um, but I guess from my perspective, I wouldn't have any issue. With um, allocating and granting, you know, a little bit more money than we normally do to each N B R. Um, for their support of this community effort, so I opened that up just for thoughts and questions. And and the N B R can do with it what it wants. If they want to give somebody a stipend who's part of the thing to do. That's up to them, it's not up to us. I don't know.
Uh, you know, the the idea of of uh. I think it was in the last meeting, the discussion about the ten thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm not on board. I mean, this is the kind of thing that that. They, people have come to us and asked us to put this together. This was not something that we're, you know, asking others to. Just drop everything you're doing to come do this. This is something that we're reaction, reacting to it, so. To me, it's it's a. They're they're volunteering their time to help our community and and I appreciate that and if I. Don't, I would not be on board of of the. Discussion before the ten thousand dollars, just to be paid to people to participate on this, I'm not, I I wouldn't. Will not vote for that, uh, but the idea that if. We, if the N B Rs are going to be active participants in making sure that this program goes through. You know, as much without a hitch as we can, uh, I would not have a problem personally. I don't have a problem uh, raising the amount that we're spending on our students. Uh, we haven't increased that amount of funding for years, and I would be one hundred percent. Agree to raise that, so if if we are going to take. The excess ten thousand and split it among all the N B Rs that do the. School program, I think that would be a great thing. It'd be a way to boost that. But I I just, yeah, I don't, I don't know about just reward paying somebody to be on it, you know. To come give opinions and respect views and input. I do understand the idea of the one about like a gift card for gas, things like that, but. I I would not be against the idea of the the bump on the N B Rs.
Anybody else?
Well, um, this is David. I I and I'd like to develop that a little bit better, you know, I've always felt that, you know, uh, there should be something, some. I won't say incentive, the incentive is going to be better, you know, better government or better participation. Um, but we should not take from those who uh, want to contribute and can contribute. But uh, may not be as economically fortunate, and I I'm not suggesting there be any salary for it. Or anything beyond a gas card, but uh, there should be something, I mean, any board of commission that someone serves on. Should be adequately compensated, by the way, including ours, uh, which is not the case too. Um, as, at least I feel, uh, so. And I don't know what it is, what the mix is, I don't know what the mix will be, but we do want to say that for giving your time, your energy. Uh, sometimes your gas, maybe sometimes your public transportation uh, to a process that's hopefully going to make. Our utility in our county better, that there should be something uh, that 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 they would be um, compensated is not. The correct word, it shouldn't be a compensation, but it should, it should compen- or compensate. Uh, for um, those participants that N B R and their uh, contributors' time, but that's, that's my feeling. Oh, it's not like we can't find somewhere in our budget somewhere. Uh, to to say this is important enough to us that we want to get a cross section of the community. Across economic and social lines to participate. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I wouldn't have problems with twenty five dollar per D M for people to show up at the that meeting, whether it be. You know, gift card. Use it for gas, use it for whatever food, use it for whatever they.
I I think that might be easier than giving a lump sum to. You know, let's say R D A or Armoredale because their level of involvement might be different than. Bob's group, Learn to Earn, I just, I I don't, I think that might be a better way to compensate. I.
Let let me say something right quick. Do they all know the condition or the contract they have with the N B Rs? Do y'all really know? We don't, let me explain it to you. Number one, you need to find out what they do. Number one, they're funded by the U G. Number two, uh, they are supposed to have fundraisers to benefit their community. Number three, we give them thirteen thousand dollars a year for youth program. So I don't see why we need to give them a dime because they're funded by U G government. We selected them to administer the youth program. Twenty five years ago because I bought them to them, forcing about gas support from Colombo to me to make sure that poor economy out. Sold out of six thousand, went to ten thousand, that's thirty thousand dollars. So now, they may not be spending all that money per year for the youth program. I hope they are, because they get the money each year. For example, here's the letter from the office club with all. Thank you for last year thirteen thousand dollars. We spent, or they spent in northeast area, twelve thousand dollars to send kids to college. Each one of the N B Rs got the same thirteen thousand dollars and they sent an application in. As the application, every dollar amount, what they did. So that's what they did. As the application to enroll in school in northeast area. Four six six one oh four. If it's kid who went to college, name, address, zip code number, they got five hundred dollars each. Twelve thousand dollars. As expenditures, how the money was spent. And cancer checks, all the kids got the money. The N B R should be doing the same thing. Thirteen thousand dollars. Invited to school each year, twenty five years. First folder, have the contract with U G government, let them invest that to support what B P U is doing for them. So probably giving them, I don't know how much they get it, but it's a little day, how much money. We're in the US to get per year, they have secretary, all the publication, and they choose. Provide them free of charge. So my point is. If you want to give them additional money for what, do what? You know, are you going to get, I don't think we need to. I'm saying that we need to find out what the N B R is supposed to be doing. Number one, they get, have a new fund, U G.
I think where we use the N B Rs is as a. A resource to get these ten members to the committee on this committee.
Thank you.
And that's it as far as the N B Rs go, and there may be somebody on that, of that ten. Those ten people that are in a minute, are a member of it.
And and the backup, my comments were earlier, some of that as well, go exactly what my point was. I was trying to say that all the townspeople heard about this, all the about what we're doing. I was saying, or we let all the community know what we're trying to do. You finally told me we're doing the N B Rs, we got application, we're going to send them out this, and so that was trying to get to that point. What mechanism are you doing to let them know to be part of this? Resolution, that was how I was trying to get that point. I'm saying, all I got is six six one oh four. That's all y'all talking to. Now, after last half, now you told me, oh, we are talking to them, we will be told if you're, we will. That's what I was trying to say, folks, all I got were sixty people, six six one oh four. Twenty five copies, all one district. Did we talk about this? Now, you're telling me, oh, yes, we're, you're going to do that. We intend, that was all I was asking.
Okay. I I think we can, I mean, let's, because it's not part of the resolution, we can table. Um, any discussion about whether or not we allocate any resource, any additional resource anywhere for it. Um, at this time, and I think, number one, we we have to see kind of how this plays out too, because we don't, as we sit here today, we really don't know.
Well, I don't, I had a problem with that, but I'm a founder.
Oh, no, no.
I didn't know those mechanisms had to be done to get to that point, so I thought, no, we found, wait a minute, we talked about all these things.
I got you.
So I think I jumped the ship, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. So, okay, so, go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying, so this resolution will be on the.
Well, that's what I'm.
It it was placed on the agenda, that was the board's request at the last meeting, so it's to the board if you want to leave it on the agenda or.
I do.
Yeah, I'm in favor of what you said, Rose, about just the compensation factor, we'll just discuss that or. Not discuss it or whatever in the, at a later time, and let's just start moving forward.
Uh, you know, and and I, I do want to say, you know, I I appreciate the patience of the public because. I'm, I'm, I'm a stickler about having processes in place. If you don't have a process in place before you start something, it's really easy to get off track and and not accomplish what you're wanting to accomplish, so. So getting the framework in place, thank you, Rose, for finalizing it all and. You know, getting us, getting us continue to move forward, um, I think that this, we're doing exactly what. We said that we would do. Think that this, we're doing exactly what we said that we would do.
Well, and obviously a huge thank you to Anne for getting it into the form that it needed to be in to get it on the agenda tonight. So thank you. We have a motion to adjourn.
Yep, so move.
Second.
And moved in second and roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Old lady Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
That motion carries the work.